All right, at six o'clock, we'll get started here. We'll say the pledge.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we got everybody here, so we got a quorum. It's good. No changes to the agenda that I'm aware of. You guys have got one that I'm not aware of? Now, look for somebody to approve the regular agenda as written. Motion approved?
Second.
Okay, Jeff makes a motion, Sarah does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent agenda. Any changes on there that last minute stuff, guys?
No.
Okay, any questions, concerns? Okay, I'm looking for a motion to accept the consent agenda as is.
So moved.
Okay, anyone makes a motion, can I get a second?
Second.
Jeff does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. All right, any changes or concerns about the minutes from the last meeting?
One addition. Lucas, can you put in the email that you sent me in reply when you get a chance? Speed of monitoring by camera, I'd like to bring that up at some later point in another meeting.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Otherwise, I'm good.
All right, anybody, anything else?
Motion to approve the minutes of the June 5th, 2023 meeting.
With said addition?
Oh, I'm sorry, with addition.
Okay. Yep, Stephanie makes a motion with said addition, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Sarah does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. All right, public comment, anything they got? Anybody want to talk about anything besides the abatement? Anything else tonight? Go ahead.
My name is Lynette Weber, I'm in County 14, 2017. Last Friday, for some reason, apparently, we decided to start draining the pond at Maple Lakes. And we had a little problem with that last year. Apparently, that didn't get carried over. So backfilling the ditch in front of County 17, the country acres. I did get someone at City Hall, they did get it shut down. Did not hear a response from City Hall, so I went to the county. Cast County surveyed it last fall, put it to the side, and are now bringing it up again to work on that because there are high spots. The county's asking that the ditch with the cattails and high weeds be cut in front of that pond, Maple Lakes, which is the city's property.
Okay.
Because they may have to do more surveying, and they'd like to be able to actually see where the high points in that ditch are, so it goes back into country acres.
Okay, so who'd you talk to at the county for that?
Kyle.
Okay.
Question, Lynette, you're talking about County 14 in front of Steve Green's old place?
Comes down by Steve Green's.
Correct.
Crosses over.
Crosses over, goes east, crosses under seventeen, and at that point right there, that is where it flows back across fourteen and then back north to you, is that correct?
South, comes south to us in front of Country Acres, that whole development south of the ditch is.
Correct, crosses back over fourteen to the south and then comes back to the west to you, is that correct? Okay.
That south county, seventeen ditch.
Yep, yep.
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that it was said, that's all.
Okay, so Brent, is that something we can probably get our people, hold with their people, and we can coordinate that up?
I'll talk, I'll look works.
Okay.
But that's also going to require work, Visto's addition there, those ditches need cleaned up there because those are horrible, and we've got to bottom the ditches. We couldn't get to bottom our ditch because again, it was full of water after backfill.
Okay.
Needs get cleaned up, they need get cleaned up on these side tubes they can see.
Okay, we'll coordinate that with the county. Okay?
Okay.
Right, anybody else got anything? All right, move on to the sheriff's update. All good news this month, right? All good news this month?
Yeah, I guess I don't have really any major, oh, I have a few concerns though.
Okay, fair enough.
As far as the report goes, I didn't notice any trends.
All right.
I don't know anything about it, but I do have concerns. I have started again on my nightly, by time, do some parking enforcement. Went around and gave a lot of warnings as far as the no parking zones that have been up since the January, February time. Feel it's given people plenty of time to get accustomed to them. Now, I've been going around, summertime, families are out with their kids. Another major concern is people parking on sidewalks, so that's where I've been addressing now, giving everybody warnings as far as the sidewalk parking, but that does fall under. North toward CenturyCo, 391049, as far as the parking regulations that cover the sidewalks, the sidewalks, the no parking zones, that kind of stuff. The other concern I've seen is, again, lots of golf carts with very young children driving around town on city streets. Again, in the city of Horace, there is no golf carts allowed on the streets. Per CenturyCo, the only towns where the golf carts are allowed are ones that have golf courses. And then they are only allowed from residents to the golf course. It is possible to change a golf cart into a low-speed vehicle. So I urge everybody to look up the requirements for that if you want to continue to drive your golf carts in town. You can, there's a way to make them into a low-speed vehicle, which then would be registered and insured, and allow them on the city streets. Those are the areas of the last, now that's getting nicer out, kids are out and families are out, so just want everybody to be safe.
Okay, any issues or being like concerns on seventeen or like on Wall right now, I know we're gonna have some with the closures and things like that, so they're gonna kind of keep an eye on that area, just.
Nothing out of the ordinary that's been one of the people. I've been doing a lot of enforcement outside of technically the city of Horace on Seventy, Six, and Forty Fifth Street. With the increased traffic, the county seventeen closed, people are lining.
Yep.
Doing a lot of extra controlling in that area, trying to get people to slow down.
Right, and I know like on Seventy Six too, I mean, that seems to be a lot more speeding going on there, I mean, I know that too, so I just, because that's where the traffic's at now. Especially with the closure on Wall, there's going to be a lot of action up on Seventy Six, so it's just.
Yeah, there are a lot of cold streets of seventy location.
Right, that's the thing.
It's all the other.
I was gonna say, Wall's gonna be a frustration for quite a few people, I'm just hoping everybody can be patient while we get this done as well, so.
And as everybody can see, I've got the shorts on, so I'll be doing my bike patrols again. So don't be surprised if you see somewhere go out, I don't know, it might just be me.
Well, on a day like this, it probably feels just fine, right?
Yeah, I don't mind being on the bike patrol, so.
No.
Just a reminder, you can't get stopped on a bike, it does have a license sign.
Good reminder, yep. Now, if I see you parked behind a semi, I gotta get a picture of that, okay, just saying, on a bike? Yeah, you know, if you pull over a semi with a bike, you got bragging rights, just saying. All right, anybody got any other thing they want to?
Yeah, did you, did you get my message about the situation at Independence?
I did, I, sorry, I forgot I had a message back on that. So we, they were checked on, there's a, what she's referring to, I don't want to go to details to call anybody out, but there's some people who are possibly homeless who have been hanging on in Independence Park with, in their vehicle. They were checked on on the third, and actually given resources on that.
Thank you, thank you.
Um, they were checked on again, I think the day you texted me, I had hurried over during the day.
Okay.
They were there, and then I went and checked after park hours, and they do leave at night.
Okay.
So, as far as I know, there's no ordinance that's supposed to, how much time you spend in the park?
No, I was more concerned about their safety.
Yeah.
And I just didn't know if they were.
Yeah, he mentioned that all on his own on the third, he took great comments that he tried to give resources, asking him.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else to ask, any other questions, concerns?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Any comments on the, if you do, appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, number eight, tax abatement resolution, Brenton.
So this is a discussion item for the council, a follow-up from January 24th. When council decided not to renew the tax abatement to have another conversation approximately six months later. It was originally scheduled for July 3rd, or we rescheduled it to this date due to the fourth of July holiday, and that meeting was canceled. So it's basically encouraged for the council to have another discussion about this. Staff, we don't have a whole bunch of information of, from different, because you presented a lot of information there. And it was really meant for, my understanding, really conversations with those affected or concerned about this, so developers, builders, residents. For council to be able to have those conversations more, put your, just gather thoughts or get input, so. The sign is more of a discussion for the council of what would you like to do with the tax abatement?
So, I'm assuming you guys have had conversations with individuals that you wanted to have conversations with, because that was the thing, we're all gonna kind of do our homework here over the next, well, since January, so. About, anybody got any questions on it, or have any topic want to bring up on it? Jeff, I'm gonna start with you.
Sure.
We'll just kind of work down the line here, give everybody's input on this.
Okay. Last week, Friday, we received an email from the Home Builders Association and the Realtors Association. Anybody want to volunteer to explain that email? Anybody?
Okay.
Can I address you here?
I have mics right there, yes.
Thank you.
You are?
My name is Shane Cullen.
Good.
So, thank you, Mayor Peterson, council, for your time today. Again, I'm Shane Cullen, first and foremost, I am a Horace resident and proud of it. I'm a business owner, I'm a Realtor and a builder. Immediate past president of the Fargo-Moorhead Area Association of Realtors. And I'm here this evening on behalf of the FM Area Association of Realtors and the Home Builders Association, along with David Reed, who's in the back. He's the president of the Home Builders Association. We're here to say thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the additional information that you had requested. You had asked for us to provide information regarding activity from the last five months, and we did so. We appreciate the council's time and efforts, and we know that you're in a challenging position to take all the information that you receive and to make sense of it all, and then to make the best decision for your community. So just wanted to make a few brief points and to touch on, and not to be redundant, and then I'll conclude. Across the region, housing starts are down, as our data showed. One of the largest decreases occurred here in Horace. Down forty-two percent year-to-date in May of 2023 over May of 2022. Regarding the Prairie Dog Funds, which was also in the letter. Once a population of 5,000 is achieved, there's a possibility to receive a minimum of $2.5 million versus what I understand is $500,000 allocated per biennium. So to do some vague and basic math, approximately 200 households, if they were to receive the tax abatement, it would be an investment into that of $400,000, which could potentially yield a $2 million return. So to touch on the numbers briefly and then to move on, we thought that was important, and in our diligence, we uncovered that. And finally, the abatement assists in growing the tax base, which helps spread the burden. The only way that residents will see relief is when the burden is spread. And in order to do that, we need more households. Thank you.
Okay. Jeff, do you have questions, though?
You removed a section there from talking about Moorhead. Do you guys not want to talk about that anymore?
I don't personally want to speak to Moorhead.
Okay, fair enough.
And make that comparison.
Okay.
Thank you for asking.
Okay, anybody else have any questions they'd like to ask? Thank you, Shane.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else, Jeff, that you wanted to bring up or discuss here?
I do want to discuss something.
Okay.
This last five months, this city's been turned upside down. And it sucks. Sarah and I had a very candid conversation two weeks ago, about two weeks ago. On who's possibly going to take over after Cory is done. And hopefully, you don't mind me sharing this, Sarah, but Sarah flat-out said, Jeff, if you want it, I ain't gonna fight you for it. I laughed and I said, you know what? I was gonna literally say the exact same thing. Because what's gone on literally has made it where people are gun-shy to run for office. And this crap's got to stop. I don't know who's gonna run for office in the next election. I truly believe people are going to be gun-shy because you can be recalled for the simplest things. Even if somebody doesn't like your style, the way you present stuff, it doesn't have to be even accurate. But we're held accountable for that. Hell, back in January, I had a news crew at the end of my driveway filming for about half an hour to do their news segment. My house, my neighborhood, my street, our housing development. And I promise you, my house, for the rest of the metro area, nobody would know that is Horace that they're talking about. That crap has to stop. So I would like to ask that the council be able to make a council's decision on whatever topic. Hell, it could be our tree program. You know, I don't want, you know, the Arbor Day Foundation to come in and start giving us recommendations, it is a council decision. And yeah, they can give recommendations, but to what point do they really get involved? So yes, I've done a lot of thinking on how do we fix this problem? I haven't fully come to a conclusion, I've had a lot of input from a lot of people in this room. Promise I talked to everybody at this table, Cory a little bit, the others more than most. So my ask is that just people respect a decision of a council. If you have a problem with it, that's fine, we can talk about it. When I asked for data, I didn't get data until last week, which is fine, I had a week to prepare. I know Bryce might have felt differently from the Home Builders Association. She was surprised when, she said, well, I only have a week, and I'm like, a week, in my profession, that's, that's an eternity. But for future reference, we'd like to have an open conversation, an open dialogue, not just one week before a vote. I do appreciate visiting with all of you. And I hope nobody's scared to visit with anybody at this table. I don't think anybody up here is mean or pointed. They want to try to have a conversation, they want to understand your points. Everybody that gets up to speak, we thank them for their time. Because it makes our job easier. That's my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, fair enough. Stephanie, you gonna, you figure we're gonna go through the council?
I do have a few comments, I appreciate your comments, Shane, thank you for them. I'm, I'm gonna be honest, I'm glad you decided not to talk about your comparison to Moorhead. I didn't, I think it was the best comparison for, for our city. But if I may, I would like to share a few numbers, I don't know if we've talked about, talked about numbers. If we, if we want to talk about a permit downturn in Horace, I think a better comparison locally would be to the cities we always compare ourselves to, which is Fargo and West Fargo. And the statistics actually show that we fall solidly in the middle. West Fargo's new, new permit builds are down 12.31%. Horace is down 39.23%, and Fargo is down 50.89%. Horace is solidly in the middle of those statistics. If the downturn was attributable to the expiration of the abatement, Horace would be down dramatically compared to other metro cities, and we are not. The downturn for Horace, Fargo, and West Fargo, and the vast majority of all other cities locally and regionally, and I did review the spreadsheets, they were very interesting. Is clearly most influenced by the myriad economic conditions that every city is dealing with, and not the expiration of a tax abatement in Horace. In my opinion, the only thing that's changed since our vote in January is that we now have five months of permit numbers for Horace, and also the local and regional numbers, and the data does not support, it does not support that our expiration of the tax abatement has had an impact on our, our permit numbers. I guess I'd like to say, in addition to those numbers, I don't know if anybody wants to discuss the numbers, but in addition to those numbers, I think following that, one of the strongest barometers of health of Horace is the high confidence that the developers and builders continue to show in Horace. Since expiration of the tax abatement, it's been business as usual in Horace. We have approved three new housing developments, a gas station, a restaurant, a bar. We continue to have strong growth commercially, and we've had explosive growth in our industrial park as well. I'm aware of six new housing developments that are going to be coming through the process of planning and zoning and council to the city in the coming months. The school district is planning a multimillion-dollar expansion to the high school and middle school already, schools that were built in 2021 and, 20 and 2021. We have seen no impact from the sun setting of the tax abatement, it's been full steam ahead in Horace. Those are my comments.
Okay, Naomi?
I have none.
Okay, Sarah?
I have a few. Thank you to everyone that spoke previously and is speaking now, including those of you on council. This has been a difficult turn of events for all of us, and I can tell you, I, I am in a unique position because I had conversations with a few on this council, and I found that a lot of the people that agreed with our previous stances would gravitate towards us. So I had a very, very high volume of communication in support of the abatement. And others had a high volume of communication not in support of the abatement. I will tell you that I did get several letters not in support of the abatement, I got more in support of the abatement. And I read all of them. I feel it's very important to really look at the facts and really understand the heartbeat of all that want to have a voice. And so I take that very seriously, and I legitimately can understand both sides, I can. But as an elected official, I am forced to take a look at the facts and take a look at the information that's presented to me, and make a decision in my belief based on what's going to best benefit our community. And that's a task that's easier said than done when you have such a high-profile item such as this, and when you have so many differences of opinions. None of them wrong, whether it be on council or in our audience here. The housing stats are down substantially. I don't know if that's inflation, I don't know if that's a direct result of the lack of the abatement. I can speculate all day long, but the bottom line is, I don't think we have enough information at this time to make that determination solidly, so I'm gonna dispute numbers at this point in time. What I can say is that the abatement is more than savings of a few tax dollars. And in saying that, I'm gonna back it up. I've seen some changes in our community since we, in essence, chose not to move forward with the abatement. Whether it's abatement-related, I can't say, but I can tell you that we have not had as many new developments as we anticipated moving forward. I believe the abatement drives opportunity in our community. I believe the government has enough of a hold on us as people in our taxes. And any opportunity that we have to give people a little bit of a break from that is an opportunity that we shouldn't overlook. I did some research into this, and in our Moody's and Collier's calls, some questions were asked specifically on whether or not the abatement impacts our bonding rating. Bonding for me is a pretty big deal, I own the infrastructure package in Horace. It's not an easy package, it is, there's a lot of work to be done in Horace, there's a lot of things that didn't happen in years previous that should have. And now we're faced with a situation where we do have unprecedented growth, and we need dollars to do that work. And we can't continue to tax and special assess the living death out of people, right? So I see an opportunity for Prairie Dog funding, Biden bucks, legacy funds, you name it, whatever it may be, as one heck of an opportunity for Horace. And I think that we should really consider any advantages to getting there sooner than later. Do I want to do that in a crazy, uncontrolled fashion? Absolutely not. As a council, we have a responsibility to keep our thumb on the growth and the development. And I believe there are pros and cons to the type of development we have, but the abatement drives opportunity because it impacts our bonding rating directly, and we have confirmed that in the past. It attracts commercial businesses. How many times does a council have we heard, we need rooftops in order to bring this business to your city? And we have rooftops. We have quite a few. But we're an inclusive community, and I believe that the abatement supports diversity in the different types of housing that can be available. I think that the abatement also impacts people other than just developers. I've had a lot of feedback, to the contrary, on the abatement, that said, you need to sock it to these developers, don't give the builders their way, you know? You, you gotta understand that this is the way it is, right? What people fail to see is that there are so many different aspects of building. Building includes not only the home you're building and the people that are buying the home, but it includes builders, it includes realtors, it includes banks, it includes small businesses, your framers, your siders, your electricians, your masons, your carpenters, you know? And in essence, when you eliminate that and you slow down the growth, especially in the manner in which I felt we did, it was a bit sudden for everyone. And a lot of people had some plans to continue with business as usual, and the bottom fell out. Like Jeff said, our town was basically put on its head, right, everything was kind of upturned. I got phone calls, an unbelievable volume of phone calls from realtors and builders, because I'm in that industry, right? I'm in commercial construction, not in this area. And all those people said, we had 12 homes that the buyers backed out on. I, I mean, this screws my whole first quarter, second quarter, third quarter. Well, and it's not all about the numbers, right, it's about the community, that's what I represent here. But I represent each and every person in this community, which does include builders, realtors, and developers, okay? The schools, there is a, a big referendum coming up with the schools. At the time they were built, the very first year they were at capacity. I think that during this time of massive inflation and with the I should say, with the lack of a crystal ball, not knowing what's gonna happen with inflation, not knowing, not knowing what's gonna happen with costs, but living through eight-dollar eggs and seven-dollar butter and four-dollar gas. I think that it is prudent for us to take advantage of the opportunity to get additional funding, to bring additional people and businesses to our community, and to do it in a controlled and stable fashion and reinstate this abatement. I will say that I have heard the opposite side. And I think that some concessions should be considered from the way it was set up previously in light of some of the concerns. And with that, I am open to, along with reinstatement, the possibility of annual review. And during that time, collecting data so that we, as a council, can be as informed as possible. and during that time, collecting data so that we as a council can be as informed as possible. And if circumstances change, can make the decision to adjust it on an as-needed basis. That being said, it may not hurt to look at this every year in January. In this case, it'd be another six months. I don't know. Some of the biggest concerns that we had previously were the sunset clause, right? It was allowed to sunset, and people felt like they didn't know what had happened as a council. They were a little surprised by some of the terms of that sunset clause. We weren't fully aware of everything, and we're human, you know? We're not perfect. But I believe we made a mistake in rushing this. I think that we corrected it and were able to go back and say, you know, "Let's reinstate this for all people that had permits." And I don't think that was wrong because at the time, we had no information to go off of. We had no data. We had no anything. And any person can interpret the data in any which way they want to. I'm simply sharing my perspective. So that said, we've done some napkin math, and the majority of the numbers I'm hearing are pretty accurate, right? You mentioned a $400,000 investment. How much of that goes to the city? Does anybody know?
Depending on the number of builds in past years, it's been twenty, thirty thousand dollars. Look at the last couple of years, it's more of eighty, ninety thousand dollars as we are putting on more and more houses.
Is there a percentage of each abatement that goes to the city?
Yeah, it's about 20% or so. We're looking at, on a per and basis, it's about $408 per.
$408 per household? How many eligible households have we had most recently in the last, say, five months? Forgive me while we do some math here. I just really want to test a theory. I'm not a data person, but there are people in this room who are, and they're very good at what they do.
The twenty-three data, our assessors didn't have that quite available because there's so much motion going on. However, 2022, 325 permits were issued. Out of that, only sixty are assumed rental, so that's 265 that could be advantage.
How many did?
As of right now, sixty-one. We have 146 that are still build or owned or under construction, so they have not filed for the abatement.
I'm sorry, how many?
Sixty-one have already applied. 146 are not yet eligible. And then there are about 58 that we assume are privately owned with no exemption filed.
Thank you. So rough math, and this is my phone calculator. Sixty-one homes, $408 is 24, let's just say 25K, right? There's another 146 you said that.
That could become eligible later this year.
Could.
Assuming that the rental company does not file.
Okay. So let's just go worst case. That's fifty-nine, five, so let's just say sixty grand. And there's another 58 that are what?
Fifty-eight that we assume are owned, and they have not filed for the abatement yet, but they still have.
Twenty-three K.
You're looking roughly at 100.
That's total, that's absolute best-case scenario. Right now, I mean, just throwing it out there, five plus sixty plus twenty-three. Hundred and eight. So that's how much we're saving the city going through this exercise. And overlooking an opportunity at two and a half million plus. It is my opinion, respectfully, because I do believe that there are pros and cons to both sides. So I say this with all due respect to those people that view an opposite opinion of mine in this room, that we may have chosen to step over a dollar to pick up a dime. I believe that circumstances can and do change, and I believe that as a council, we have a responsibility both fiscally and as a municipal entity to keep our thumb on that. But I do believe that this abatement carries much more benefit to our community than otherwise. That's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I guess I do just have a couple more comments. I, I mean, maybe I, maybe I misunderstood or I didn't get the information, but I, I'm not aware of any reference to the tax abatement in a Moody's report. Was there a reference to a tax abatement?
There is reference.
I've read all of the Moody's reports. I didn't see any reference. I saw a reference to economic factors, but I did not see a reference to abatement.
There is a direct reference at the end of the most recent report where they actually came to our meeting, not of the abatement.
Right.
But if the growth were to be slowed or stalled in our community, that it would have a direct impact on the Moody's.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. And I just wanted to pick up there. Prairie Dog funding is an interesting point. I just kind of wanted to, I have a few thoughts on it, too. It's really, to me, the argument here tonight, that's only a determinative factor if the decline that we've seen this year is attributable to the tax abatement, and that is not the case. I think it is clearly shown, we're solidly in the middle between all of our other cities around here. First, just a little background on Prairie Dog. We actually got a little over $1.3 million late 2022 and early 2023. There are multipliers that the state uses in that legislative funding for three-year averages of percentage increases in population and three-year percentage averages of taxable value increases. And Prairie Dog funding is not promised to cities, and it's not provided to cities on any specific timetable. According to current forecasts from the state, they will not be making further distributions to municipalities until sometime in 2025. Also, I think another thing that we should remember is once Horace reaches the number of 5,000 for population, we have to take over all miles of county road going forward, many, many miles from the county. They will, they will cede ownership to the city, which is going to require ownership of the county roads within our city limits, and we will have to maintain, upgrade, and manpower to, to keep them up. So I don't think that Prairie Dog comment is definitive factor in this conversation because our numbers are not down due to the, due to the abatement. And I think we also need to remember, we're tagging along every taxing entity on your tax statement with the abatement, and that's losses to the schools, the counties, the fire, the township, and all of them. For me, I, when the numbers prove that we're not down due to the abatement, I'm, I'm not interested in leaving a dollar on the table if we don't have to. Thank you.
I will color those comments only because it was directed at mine by saying that the funding was not limited to just the Prairie Dog funding and that the infrastructure, such as highway and roads, is subject to additional funding with a higher population.
Right, we do get access, that's the thing. Once you go over 5,000, we do get access to federal funding on some of these roads, so. And again, the county had told us that once they do give us the roads, they're going to do some work on them prior so that they're in shape, they get cleaned up, and they look, and they operate better than where they're currently at. They know they're, that they look bad right now, and they want to clean them up. So that's something that they're going to do for us when that happens, so. Yeah, like on the Prairie Dog fund, too, you know, that is something that, on the event horizon, is to keep in mind because it is another possible funding source that we have access to that can help us because we don't, nobody wants special assessments, and that's kind of what we're looking at, you know, down the road, is being able to get away from special assessments if we can and have this stuff funded as much from state and other sources for funding mechanisms. Kind of like we did here with the water project in town. We were able to do a cost share with the state water commission. We're going to look and try and do more of that with other things, too, but we got to have the money to be able to do that with. So there's something to be aware of with that. Jeff, I didn't mean to cut you off. If there was something else you wanted to say, we're kind of going roundtable here. Is there anything else you want to bring up?
Back to you. So, um, numbers from the houses that are rolling off the abatement. So it would be approximately, what, 2020 or 2019? What is that right now?
Assuming 2019 took the abatement in 20 and 21, they're already off, so we'll be looking at 2020.
Okay. So we do our math on those ones.
2020, we've assumed rentals at zero.
Yep.
We have assumed that eighty-six permits issued in 2020, eighty-two of them took advantage of the abatement, four of them did not. So it's a quick math with twenty-two. It's about $33,500 additional tax revenue coming out of books this year.
Okay.
Questions on that, or? Ms. Hearn?
Angry on that? Nope, that's okay. Further discussion? Do you have any?
Other than just, you know, I don't really have a problem if we want to do an annual review, like what Sarah had mentioned. So we just want to do that. I suggest, though, if we're going to do an annual review, that would be something we would conduct in December so that by the end of the year, everybody would know where this is going.
That's a good idea.
So we can plan for Jan. 1, everybody would know where that's happening. Give a little bit more heads up on it. That would just be my comment, if we're going to do an annual review.
It'd be, it'd be tough for me to get accurate data from them because I don't think they had wrapped up their year-end stuff yet, but.
Or maybe we do it every, you know, middle of the year so that there is data. That, that's really what we need to go off of.
Like a year's worth of, if we went, I mean, would that be something, Jeff? If we're going to look at that, is that a June timeframe? June, June? Like a year from now, we'd have more data. Or even by the end of the year, I'm thinking we'd have more information.
I'd just like to see it in January.
Okay. All right. Just saying, you know, something we ran into this time around, and we had to back it up a little bit because of. But if you guys want to do January, that's fine. That way, everybody knows.
We can certainly be prudent if there are changes, you know? I have no issue working with that. There are concessions that can be made to work together with everybody, I think.
So let's, let's think about this, then, if we do, and then go bring back the abatement.
Do you want to take any comments from the crowd right now?
I was just going to say we were going to comment here, but, okay, I'll take a couple. I just don't want this to be an all-night event, so go ahead.
I just got a couple of quick bullet points. The five-month look isn't really fair when you're in our world. You know, the projects you bring up, the new bar, the new commercial activity, I started that two years ago. All the new stuff you're seeing in town was done more than two years ago. And if you've got a couple of new developments going on right now, I guarantee you they were planned two years ago. Our world doesn't turn on a dime. I started doing developments in Horace in twenty, in twenty-two years ago. It takes a long time, and we've got a lot invested in the city of Horace, and the city of Horace has got a lot invested. And to keep your bond rating, you got to keep things moving. And we don't want to see it go stale at all. And, and I truly have lost a lot of lot sales since January. You can come to my office, I opened it up before. Anytime you want to come and look, I'm happy to show it to you. So those are all facts. I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Is there anybody else? I'll do like three or four more here. Come on up to the microphone.
I'm Andrew Kirdan. I'm a broker of Aspire Realty out of Fargo. Couple of stats, I have some questions on for you. You reference bill, you reference these lot sales, West Fargo, Fargo versus Horace. What you don't talk about is the number of available lots for building on. Horace numbers of available lots versus the available buildable residential lots in West Fargo and Fargo. West Fargo and Fargo, we're full. I sell houses to people every single day. The only place for buildability is down in Horace. You can wait on Golden Valley, you can wait on Madeline's Meadows, you can wait till they pull some other area to develop because that's what residents are seeing now. There's nowhere for them to go. I have clients I signed a contract on today. They won't move in until March because they have to wait for the next addition of Golden Valley to go in. So your numbers are skewed when you're looking at it from that perspective. When you're saying, "Oh, well, we're right in the middle," you're not taking into consideration what was available for people to choose from in the first place. That's huge. If you ask about the resident perspective, I live in Horace. I'm seeing what my taxes are doing. I'm seeing what Wall Avenue is going to do. You don't have people coming in to pay for that. So me, as a resident, I'm going to get stuck with that bill. Meanwhile, we have hundreds of families wanting to build, wanting to come here. We've got three beautiful schools here to fill with students. And now we're putting a crutch right in the buildability for all of these people. While the abatement means pennies on the dollar for the city of Horace, what about the infrastructure? We don't even have a grocery store. Casey's, Casey's has sold out of everything, day in and day out. So for me, a mom of four, I'm having to run into West Fargo or Fargo in order to get groceries if it's, you know, midnight or whatever the case is, and I'm out of something for my kids the next day. How does a city that's sitting right next to West Fargo not even have that? And we'll continue not to have that because we don't have roofs here. I've talked to builders, we have great friends who are builders, the people who are going to put the infrastructure in here, and they're putting the paws on everything, which hits us as the residents. We've been out here since 2009. We've done our part. We're great citizens, we've got kids who'll go to our schools out here. And I can tell you what we are doing is having a profound impact. It is hitting all of us on our pocketbooks, day in and day out. We're seeing the projections of what are going on, or of what's going on out here. We're missing the big picture. People are not coming here, people are waiting. They're waiting until Fargo or West Fargo has something else available, they're going to Mapleton. And that's unfortunate because Horace has a ton to offer, and I think you're looking over all of that, and we're going to pay the biggest price. You guys all live here. You're going to get stuck with the bill just like I am. And that's a huge concern. You have to take these bigger things into consideration. And when you're looking at your numbers on a spreadsheet, make sure that they're accurate. Make sure you're looking at all of the finite details and facts that go into it because we're not taking that into consideration. We're looking at all of these developments that now are sitting with great lots with nobody pulling permits on them because the permits are going elsewhere.
Okay, I appreciate the comments. Anybody have any questions, if they want to ask questions? Okay. Okay. One more on this one.
Good evening. I am a twenty-three-year resident of the city of Horace. I've watched very closely what's going on.
What's the name, please?
Ross Renner.
Hi, Ross.
Hi. As we talk about this topic, it really brings a lot of things to my mind. And when we talk about, you know, growth of the city, you know, how are we going to get the Prairie Dog funds, even though we know they're not guaranteed? We don't know when we'll get to that number. We don't seem to know how much that will apply to what we're doing. So it's really just sits out here as something that we want, but not necessarily how we're going to get there, when that's going to happen, and what we're going to do with that money. I think is what was striking to me more than anything is you mentioned that, that, you know, if we can give people some money, that we should do that. Well, I would take my $418 back that you just gave away to someone that just moved here. We talked about the $108,000 that you're estimating for these permits. How much of that? a great point in not supporting this. There's no place else for people to go. They're going to continue to come here. Horace is an attractive community for people to come here. And we talked about the, the savings that they will have. That's not going to stop someone from moving here. I will tell you that much right now. If they want to move to Horace, they will certainly move to Horace, not over a tax abatement. That is not going to cause them to go somewhere else. I do believe that when we talk about the data that we're all referencing, that we can't necessarily really look at that and put a lot of credence into that because there's so many factors that have happened within the last six months to a year that affect all of it. You can't say that the tax abatement has had an impact on people not moving here when you saw, well, really, in recent times, record-high interest rates, uh, record-high building material costs that have gone up and down. It's hard to look at that and say, okay, this is the cause or that's the cause. I do know what the cause is, is that when we give that money out to other people, that it costs us more because someone has to pay for the things that are happening here. And based on my recent tax history and the increases that I've seen, I'm paying for it. I'm paying it for specials, for things that I don't, didn't need. I didn't need the roundabout. I got along fine until all the growth started happening. And I understand there's going to be growth here, no doubt about that. I think we all see that. But I think that we also can look at it from the standpoint of responsible growth and metered growth. I think that a two-hundred percent increase in permits or whatever it was the last few years is probably pretty high. And I would dare guess the city staff wouldn't mind if things would slow down a little bit. So I don't know that, that, uh, us having this abatement or not having this abatement is going to slow the growth of, of Horace. I, I guess, maybe I would ask this question, is where are we at currently for city population?
State's latest numbers I saw were right, just under forty-three hundred.
Okay, so we're talking seven hundred...
Is the last, is the last state projection we've seen, just a few weeks ago.
So we're talking seven hundred people until we get to the magic number to grab the Prairie Dog Funds. We'll get there pretty quickly without giving this abatement, I would dare guess. Would we not? So one other question. My question would be is, how many people here are with the realtor industry and how many are here from the construction? Raise your hand. Nobody else in Realtor? You're not Realtor? You're not a Realtor? Okay, let's get our hands up. Okay. So we talk about writing letter campaigns and things like that. When you have the Home Builders Association gathering people together and organizing the campaign to write letters, of course, you're going to get a lot of letters. When you have each individual person sitting in the city on their own, who most people aren't real comfortable standing up in front of people and talking about these things, you're going to have a much better response from a group of people that have something to gain rather than individual person that sits in a city. I would ask that you continue on with the vote that you regularly started with back in January. It makes the most sense for the residents of Horace.
Okay, anybody got any questions for us?
I, I guess the only question I, no, please, go ahead. Thank you, sir. The only question that I had, um, and, and we did a poll last time, so we got part of it in here this time with a, a few people that were watching and whatnot. How many people in this room are residents of the city of Horace?
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else want to get up and talk in opposition? Take one more if somebody's got comments that they want to make. Okay.
My name is Jim Dew, and, uh, I would like to say thank you to all you people, the people on the city council that represent the people of Horace. Because a vote the other way is representing the people that might come, or it's representing the realtors, or it's representing the builders. But I want to thank you that represent the people. And the question I would ask, you should ask yourself, who do you represent? The people or somebody else?
And does anybody else, we got one more, one more person who wants to, okay?
Mayor, thank you. I am Jim Nyhough. I'm the mayor of Oxbow. And I wasn't going to talk until Congressman, Congressman, Councilman Jeff, me. That was, I could make that speech every single meeting in Oxbow. It's so frustrating. And what you do and the fiduciary responsibility you take for all your residents is huge. And, um, you know, from, I understand the, the rapid growth. I mean, we sold a hundred and twenty lots in two and a half years and developed it. In our, what, for us, what it was, was the sales tax revenue. Our sales tax revenue went through the roof. And now we're landlocked. You know, we aren't, and so we have no lot of stuff for sale right now. And we're seeing the hangover of selling, you know, a hundred and twenty lots in two years, two and a half years, because our sales tax revenue, we, we don't have materials coming into town anymore. And that's a big deal. Um, when the, for consideration, when the ring dyke is done, we're working with a developer right now that's going to develop the west side of eighty-one, similar to how we develop the rest of the city. And we have room for another hundred and twenty lots. Um, and, you know, we've been able to reduce our taxes because of the sales tax revenue. And we're extremely motivated to work with a developer because of the fact that, again, we're going to have this influx of sales tax revenue which swings our budget. I mean, our budget's definitely different, different than yours. But that sales tax revenue from continued growth and continued building, um, is what's holding our city together right now. And when that's done again, I'm not going to be the mayor again, and, but it's going to be somebody else's problem. And I hear what you guys are saying. I mean, I mean, take these problems, I mean, I don't need this. And I, I hear your pain in, in this decision. And you got residents, you got people that aren't residents here. From a neighbor, I mean, Mayor, I appreciate our partnership through some tough floods. We've helped each other out both ways. And, you know, I think of Horace as a sister community more than I do Fargo or West Fargo. So I appreciate what you guys do. Um, and know that in 2025, we will be, um, opening up in a development with another hundred and twenty lots. And from, between now and then, we're basically landlocked. So, you know, we're going to do what we can. I mean, from our perspective, we would, we would support an increase to the dollar amount. We'd, we'd go to three fifty in New York minute for an abatement just to get the sales tax revenue.
What you're saying is you're for it then, sir?
What's that?
What you're saying is you're for it then, sir?
For what?
You're for the abatement, is what you're saying?
Yeah, for sure. I mean, because of the, the, the value of, of the building and that, the sales tax revenue is worth more to us than, uh, property taxes. I mean, we've reduced property taxes just because of the sales tax revenue that we've had. We, we don't maintain as much as you guys maintain. So we have different problems, but, you know, same kind of concept. If we go through another phase of building, get a bunch of stuff paid for, again, maybe we'll, I mean, I, I don't see a reason for us to increase property taxes for at least five years. If, if, and we've decreased them just because of the influx of materials coming into town and the sales tax revenue from it.
We don't get to do that.
So I, I don't know if that's been part of your consideration or not, but it certainly is part of ours.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. It's been a while since we chatted, so thank you.
Yep, thanks, guys.
Okay. All right, so what do you guys think? Do anything tonight?
I'll try again. Um, I stood on my own last time. It was not easy, but I will...
Want to talk about it first?
Yeah, you got something on your mind?
Do you guys want to look at having an abatement up until the end of the year and have a discussion in January? Do you want to go a couple of years, have a discussion and get some numbers? So you know, so we know, you can see. To Kevin's point, I mean, there is some time lag that's going to be on here with this. I understand that. We want to make sure we make a good decision based upon numbers that are realistic and not just stuff that you hear are getting made up either, so.
I, uh, I really appreciate the discussion here tonight. The, uh, there were several comments made tonight, things that had been in the back of my mind, but, um, I got a little more perspective on tonight. Both sides. Thank you.
Jeff, what do you think?
Well, um, my world is data. And, uh, I can tell you, there's not enough data to make a decision one way or the other from what we have. That's just brutally honest. Obviously, yes, I would want to revisit this on a yearly basis.
You looking at January if we were going to do that?
January. Like, that's, it gives them a time to wrap up their end-of-year stuff. Hopefully, that's their end of year, I guess I should ask. I'd assume their fiscal year is January to December. Maybe it's not. Um...
But I think even over twelve months, you'd see some trending. You'd know one way or the other, some, there would be some numbers.
I'd see something. And right now, it, it's, you can't tell anything right now.
Right.
I, I think, given the circumstance, like you said, with which we've rocked the boat here, I think it's prudent to reinstate with the understanding that we reevaluate. I'm, I thought long and hard this weekend, and I had to really search my soul and open my mind because I'm pretty pro, but I feel that there's a way to accommodate and reach middle ground more so than we have in the past.
I just have a question. So when you guys say we can, you know, look at the data in a year, or January, or whatever, I mean, if you're reinstating it now, I mean, what's, what's going to be, what are you going to, like, what are you going to be your thoughts? Oh, yep, the abatement's doing its job, or like, yeah, I guess we don't need it. Yes. I mean, like, what, what are you going to be evaluating at that time is what I guess I don't understand. Um, if you, if, if we choose to reinstate it now, in January, what are we looking at? Yep. Like, I, I guess I, I just don't understand what, what the metrics would be that we're looking at, if that makes sense. Um, if you're reinstating it and you're looking at data, Jeff, I guess I'd, how do you, you're, you're not comparing it to not having it. So that makes zero sense to me. Like, you're not comparing anything. You're just like, yeah, looks good.
So right now, there's a lot of variables in play even with that. Um, hopefully in six months, things are a little bit clearer either which way, whether we go into recession, depression, we can call it, or whether all of a sudden the Fed starts lowering their prime. Um, we see either housing market take off or fall flat out of space. Um, in that sense, we tried to restart the abatement. If the numbers don't greatly improve, then...
But I would think too, there'd be some trend, but whether we can make a definitive, just like now, we can make a definitive one.
Well, because then, because then the next thing you're going to say is, well, I guess we don't know if it's, you know, the economy or, you know, like, how do you, I don't know how you just start looking at things and say, well, it's probably because of this. And it's, it's always a probable, you know? So I guess that's where it gets a little bit tricky in my mind to just start trying to...
There was some pretty good information brought up. Sales tax was something I hadn't put a lot of thought into. Again, it was in the back of my mind. Um, boy, hearing that you could lower property taxes off of sales tax revenue is a pretty big deal. And I, I think that's the goal here is to try to lower some costs in our town.
I just laugh because, you know, um, the meetings that we've had in regards to our property taxes have not gone very smooth, in my opinion, um, as far as the increases that everyone is seeing. And, um, I mean, I guess the questions that I have is, what about the existing homeowners that have multiple factors? What if they want to sell their home and they want to make money off their home, but their home is now decreased because there's a decreased home next to them? So they don't get their full potential, is what I've been told. I'm not a Realtor, so don't, it's not my forte. So, um, I've had people mention that to me. Um, I've also had people mention that, um, because the homes, I mean, you're, you're always going to have an increase in your property taxes because you have these newer homes that are raising all the values as well. So after you are done with your abatement, it goes back up, right? And then you're, it, it's always going to be like this vicious circle in my mind. It's like, and that's where I struggle with this conversation because you have, you get your abatement, and then you're, every, all your other taxing entities go up. And then when your abatement's over, then you go up. And then the next round comes in and then you're, you're, it's a constant step up in my mind. And it's, it's really tricky to navigate. And I don't know, I don't know what the right answer is because, like you said, there's two sides to it. And I appreciate all of the comments, um, from the, um, realtors and the, the builders and even the developers. I've had some really good conversations, um, the past couple of days with a couple that work very closely in, in town here. And, um, it's just, I'm, I struggle because then I have residents who are saying it's expensive. I mean, I feel like it's, everything's getting more expensive, um, as far as my taxes. And we've, I mean, I've, we've talked to Breton. I'm hoping that you can get us the budget so we can look at how we can lower mills and help the existing residents because we don't, we don't have an incentive for existing homes when they're sold. I mean...
Let, let me ask the realtors in this town.
Can I ask something, say it really quick? Sorry.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry, you had Realtor perspective. I hear your concerns.
Yeah.
So when you're talking about values of homes, I understand a lot of the pre-existing residents say, okay, what is this new construction going to do, right? So why are new construction residents getting these abatements or these incentives to move here and I get nothing? Now, my house doesn't qualify for an abatement. In 2009, we're done and over with, okay? However, new construction homes coming to a community like this actually adds to all of your resale ability and your investments that you guys now live in. They help you. They act as active comps. So when you, we're in the real estate realm and we're looking at houses, the basement part of it, we don't even take that abatement out of property into consideration when placing a value on it. So if you have a, say, a three-level split in Southdale Farms and it's worth three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, three bed, two bath, whatever, Southdale Farms, and now you've got a house on, like, over here off Cheyenne. And again, you've got, case in point, like, five bedrooms, four bathrooms, yeah, 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 pre-existing, been there since nineteen seventy-six. And that one now just sold for four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over the three hundred and fifty thousand new construction. The new construction development in this area is helping all of us for resale ability on our properties. It's growing all of our investments. It's not harming anybody sitting in this room in any way, shape, or form. And you talk about reducing mills. You need households. You need people to share that tax, that tax expense. The way you do that is... The way you do that is you build on these lots that are sitting here. The way that you aid on the infrastructure side of our cities, like, trust me, I know, I don't have an abatement, I'm a taxpayer in this town, yes, I'm in real estate, however, I also am in real estate, so I know the impact that all of these developments have on a pre-existing city like Horace. It's a benefit to all of us. It helps share in the cost of the expenses to maintain the infrastructure in a town where the buildings are getting dilapidated, the roads are getting dilapidated. We don't even have walking paths walking through here for the kids who run around this town. Now, we're talking about bringing households in, giving them a slight break for two years, which isn't anything to drop a hat in, but their sales tax is gonna help our economy. Their kids filling our schools is going to help our economy. Them taking advantage of the, the Casey's, Big Erbs, whatever else, that helps all of us. It doesn't harm us, it helps us, and it helps us to share the tax liability that this town has because it's not getting cheaper to live here. It's going up by the minute. Walla Island alone is gonna have a significant impact on all of us. But now, you build Outlaw's River, and you have people sharing in all of that expense, guess what? The pre-existing citizens, like myself, living here, our piece of that burden is going to be made smaller, not bigger, by sharing that expense with the new households coming in. And that's what I think is really important for you guys to understand. This all aids in us in the development of Horace, aids for all of us pre-existing residents.
Thank you.
Does that help?
Can I, can I just add to that? So, all, well, I live here, I think I could probably...
No, I live here too, so I just...
I agree.
But the question I have is, we moved to Horace, we've been being our forever home, so how does property values going up actually help us? Because there's property taxes going up with the property values. If I sell my house, I get it, but you said it benefits everybody here and doesn't hurt people.
Eventually, so your home is your asset.
Thank you.
No, are you kidding? I sold a house to somebody two years ago, and they just turned the thought on because they got relocated back to Minneapolis. Two years ago, they bought brand new. They didn't even get to qualify for the full abatement because his job relocated him. He actually walked from the closing table after all expenses paid were fit with $36,000 and a check to him because we have grown our property values. It is an asset to everybody, and the reason why our taxes continue to go up is because we don't have enough people to share in the cost of all of this infrastructure that has gone in.
I don't, I don't think you heard me though. I said, we don't plan on selling the house. The example it was giving was for somebody that just sold their house.
Your home is always your greatest asset. Your home will always...
Hey, guys, let's bring it back up here, bring it back up here. We're not, we're not moving back and forth, okay? If you wanna address, you dress up here.
So, just one comment I wanna make is, when comparing us to Oxbow, I think we have to be careful about the sales tax revenue. What's the population of Oxbow?
Hmm, four hundred.
Four hundred people. So, one, Horace, it's much higher percentage of the overall sales tax revenue within Oxbow than what it is in Horace. The other thing is, what's the average home value in Oxbow versus the average home value of Horace? I, driving around Oxbow, I would guess it's a lot higher in Oxbow than what it is in Horace. So, we gotta be careful that, to say, oh, the sales tax is gonna be a benefit for Horace, but we're comparing really two different situations here.
Okay.
And I think a big thing that we've had a big problem with, I think we did an economy that had just under six hundred children in Oxbow, which, a lot of our construction, and our new construction, with some families moving in, and, and the kids, they will come.
Mr. Renner, do you have a comment?
Because that's my other concern here, is the, the Horace Elementary School. My, my son, in second grade, had a class of 24 kids in his class. It's hard for a teacher to give a quality education when you have a student ratio of 24 to one. And we saw that this year, we heard it from other parents. And that's what I'm really concerned about, is my children's education and selling out conveniences of a grocery store and all that old stuff. So, I don't have to drive an extra four minutes to the grocery store but sacrificing my children's education because the school can't keep up with the population growth in Horace? And don't get me wrong, I am not anti-growth, I'm responsible growth. But what I'm seeing is the school system in Horace cannot keep up with the growth.
Right, but that's something to talk to the school district about. That's not for us to decide, because that's not our, that's not our part of the show.
It's worse by, by accelerating growth.
Ross, you had something you wanted to bring up?
I think the rest, the comment of how all of these houses are increasing the value of our own houses. I currently own an acre lot where I sit. The area behind my house has just redistricted into high-density commercial property. If you don't think that's going to reduce my property value, you're not sitting on the same planet as I am. Because if you put a bunch of houses behind a large lot where people would want to live and a bunch of commercial property, that is not going to be very attractive to them. The other part of it is, is that I would dare guess, if we looked at growth in the city and all the population, the high-density houses, and increase in value of a house, my house would probably be worth more money if I had comparable lots the same size as mine in the city. No one wants to buy a house necessarily with a big lot, with a bunch of small lots, and commercial property behind it. I would dare guess that my house would be worth more if we had large lots in front, large lots in back, without the commercial property. I don't know that you can say it benefits everyone because it is not going to benefit me. And I also don't wanna listen to the skid steers, the pounding of the hammers, and all that stuff behind my house for the next five to seven years. If you would like that, I can park my skid steamer in your yard and put it in reverse. It's not pleasant, and it's going to grow. I did that, but you can't tell me that my house is going to work more money because we're adding more evidence.
Okay.
Mr. Renner?
Yeah.
I can speak to that. I own an acre lot in Horace. I have dense development directly behind me, Southdale Farms. My neighbors put their house on the market, and it sold in less than a week at double the value.
But it could have been triple if you wouldn't have had that.
Or whatever.
Or what could it be? Of course, you'll laugh at that. But it's, it's, but what I'm saying is the same thing. If, if, if you had a larger area behind you, wouldn't that also have been worth more? You don't know.
I, I don't know, and I'm not gonna speculate, just like I'm not gonna... I'm not gonna speculate on cruey dog funding or anything else, or the causes or what numbers are, right? But that's, I, I think I opened my statement with that, but I do wanna make sure that we understand that it can go a myriad of ways, and it isn't all just one way or another. I can tell you that several of the conveniences that this town is looking at, such as the Dairy Queen, the most recent Sanford Clinic that's gonna be opening, um...
Headquarters?
Headquarters, restaurants, those were in the, the top ten list of our residents. And we've worked very, very hard to bring those amenities to our town, as have many of the developers and builders here. And in order for us to continue with some of those nice things that the people want, and I don't mean all people, because not everybody wants it, right? But the people that came and had a voice at the time that we did the...
Envision Horace.
Envision Horace 2045 comprehensive plan, right? That was their bucket list. And so, those are things that we are pushing to try to get in our community. And, and I just wanted to clarify some of the reasonings why some of those things are appealing to people, especially some of the young families surrounding schools in our community. Daycares is a big thing. Most recently, we've added another daycare in Horace here. Really, really pleased about that, and we wanna continue to do additions here. We, we got our first apartment buildings. Not everybody perceives that as a good thing, but I believe that there should be diversity. I would like to see, you know, I, I look at West Fargo, just for example, and I'm just gonna throw this example out there. It wasn't that many years ago that their main street looked an awful lot like this one, right? And I drive down there now. They've done some investing in their community, they've added residents to their community, and they had enough resources to put some multi-use buildings. I would want nothing more than to see some multi-use buildings go in to some of the areas here in our downtown. Beautiful planters, nice areas for people to move in together, you know, to celebrate and to have community activities. These are some really nice things, and it doesn't have to happen all at once. But I think a lot of people would enjoy those things.
So, doesn't have to happen all at once, how do we manage the growth? Like, you know, thank you, I've heard you've done a great job managing the growth, thank you. Um, but what I'm concerned about is, um, the, the boom. I've, I, I want to see sustainable, natural progression of growth that is able to be well-managed because, Mr. Mayor, you're not gonna be here to manage our growth anymore. Um, so, I guess, I, I just wanna make sure that we... Thank you to all of the developers and all of the home builders. I really appreciate all of the, um, great work that you guys do. I am not anti-growth. I just have to say that because that has been said to me multiple times, and I just want to make that clear. I'm not anti-growth. I am, however, for sustainable, um, natural progression. When we get to 5,000 people, we get to 5,000 people. When we get to 7,000 people, we get to 7,000 people. I guess I have a hard time understanding what is, what is your goal? Is it gonna be 300 homes? Is it gonna be 400 homes? Is it gonna be 500 homes? What is it? Because it seems that nothing is going to be good enough, and that's what I'm concerned about, is, um, I think that we grow as we grow, and the community is going to do great, um, as we grow. And we will get a grocery store, um, when we hit those, that magic number, whatever that magic number, whatever that magic number is, um, I don't know. But, um, I guess I just, I just need to understand how, what is sufficient? Because we talk about growth, and it's stifling, oh, it's, it's, it's great, it's too high, it's too low, it's... What is acceptable? I don't, that's where I'm struggling, you know? Because I don't, I, I don't know what you guys want, yes?
So, you know, I mean, that's a good question. That's what I was kinda pondering too, is, I hear we get more homes and the bill's gonna go down. What number is that? That's what I'm kinda curious of, is if when we hit 5,000 people, 10,000? When did, when do we see that magical peak of people and then the tax level?
I think if I had a magic crystal ball, I'd be able to answer that. I can honestly say there's too many exterior factors to give you a number, way too many.
But what can, like, what's acceptable in your industry? Like, what are you looking for?
I mean, here's my big deal, is you guys have committed to a lot of infrastructure. You've approved a lot of plats for housing developments. I don't think anybody today is bringing a plat forward at this meeting. We're talking about lots that have already improved, and I think the tax abatement should follow with those lots that are approved to date, that you've committed a big number to, and we have...
So, you want at least 2022?
No, I'm saying the lots that currently exist, either they're just getting certified through the development process, or they're complete and vacant right now, and Breton knows the number. It's, you, you've committed to quite a few lots in your community, and if you stop housing, people are gonna migrate somewhere else, like Catherine said.
I just don't like the word "stop housing" because that's not what the plan was.
Pardon me?
I said, I just don't like the word "stop housing" because that's not what...
Well, it slows it down, okay?
Okay, slow down, not stop.
But you've already committed, and we have too, to a lot of lots. And whether you put a house on them or not, that lot's there, and it's a commitment to the city and, and to us, and we'd like to see you grow the city with what you've already approved. If you wanted to have this argument before you approved a plat, it would make sense to Kevin. But once you've approved a plat and put all the improvements in, and then to slow it down, that's, that's a tough one to swallow, that's a tough pill to swallow, and that, that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, anybody else in the council here? Gonna wrap this up, see what you guys wanna do. A lot of, everything's probably been said that needs to be said right now. Guys on the board, anybody stands? You wanna do it?
I would like to reinstate it with the conditions that we listed.
Which are? Which one do you want to do? Jan, January?
What did we agree on?
Review over here.
Review annually?
January.
Okay, January review.
Would you review it in 2024 or wait until '25, so you have a year and a half? So, you have data, you have time for that data to materialize, and you show a commitment? Or how far out are you looking?
I, I guess that begs the question, you know, this, uh, is gonna take a little bit to recover. I'm open to suggestion.
If you're gonna, if you're looking for that review in January, would you wanna do it in '24? Or would you wanna wait for a year and change to get some more definitive data? Or at least see some trending?
I'm not trying to push it out that far.
Okay. If... Well, then you wanna do a year from now? Would that be enough, do you think, to get some idea?
If you do a new year from now, how are you gonna stop it in mid-year?
Yeah, I'm telling you, I know, I'm just throwing it out there. I just wanna make sure if we do this, we got valid data, then when we do a really valid...
I understand, it's to Naomi's point, she's spot on.
What else would you wanna do on there? Do it, if, let's just say, we say January review, what other conditions or stipulations would you wanna put on that? Or just that?
That's pretty huge, not sunsetting, removing any of the stipulations that went with it, and agreeing to regular, formal review.
Mm-hmm.
I think is a pretty big change compared to what we had previously.
Stephanie, Naomi, comments?
I don't have a comment.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Jeff?
Okay. I can start with this year.
That's fair.
So, we'll see.
And then, if, if the data doesn't, you know, align with that story, then I ain't going any further.
Meaning, we would need to see some...
I, I gotta see something.
Okay, so some trending, something?
Yep. What can you do, guys?
Well, pulling permits has been a problem, and for months, waiting to get permits. If you pull a permit now, it's gonna be like three months to turn it out. No one's gonna build a house, and three months from now, I'm starting to win it. But it'll make your trends go worse.
Do you have an alternate recommendation?
You mean, there's been a delay in getting the permits?
Right now, there is.
Right now, we're about a week, a week, week and a half.
Last year.
The year bef, I believe it was the year before last, we did have a long lead time, and it was, and we've up-staffed, and we have three billion inspectors now. Uh, we also have agreement with a private entity to help us if we are behind. A lot of times, our delays now are just if a development is opened up yet. So, like, we have South Fork, this, this coast is right about to open up, but it's not open, so we can't issue a permit yet. Um, but right now, last I heard, and it was about a week ago, I asked everybody, inspectors, they're about a week and a half out. Week, week and a half. It just depends when we get them. If we get 20 or 30 permits all in one time, it does take a little while, but then they get caught up. So, it's a, they go coming waves, so. But right now, it's about a week and a half, week right now, so.
So, I have a, I have a point, I guess. Um, so, if you want a year's worth of data, why would you leave it off for the whole year and look at that data? Otherwise, what, what would you compare it to?
I guess that's what I was trying to say, I don't, I don't understand what you look at.
You should leave it off for a year's worth of data without it. Otherwise, when you put it back on, you got nothing to look at.
We have a lot to look at when we head on.
You don't have a comparison to what it was like for a year without it.
Okay. Another question, okay, a couple more guys, and I wanna wrap this up, whether we're gonna go or not, so go ahead.
Just, just initial statement, you know, from, uh, from putting a realtor hat on, and we're looking, we look at the data at our ears, and given our, our geographic location, we have very distinct seasons, and so we have very distinct...
And so we have very distinct fluctuations in market trends. So looking at the macro and the further back that you look, it's gonna be a better, uh, it's gonna give you a better idea of what's actually happening as far as the trend goes. If we dissect it by three months, it's not good. Six months, not great. Nine months, getting better than it can be a full year because of the seasonality cycles.
Kevin, you have something else you wanna add?
I was just gonna say a, a minimum of a year to try to get through the developed lots. You know, we entered into those developments thinking that we're gonna be competitive with the other markets. And by taking that abatement with the change of your competitiveness, so. I mean, we've got some huge investments in the city right now and the city has huge investments also we'd like to go through and be as competitive as we can with every other market here in our community. So I, I'd like to see all the developed lots. Cause women would probably like to get revisited, but at least give it a year.
Okay.
Those are the guys that know.
Jeff, what are you, what are you thinking?
Can't cut it off in July, can we? It's either a year, the whole year?
You could, I guess, might see. Just an idea for you, counsel to consider would be if you say permits issued within a certain timeframe. That way nobody's left paying if they were to pull the permit. And similar to the, where the council did already, you know, here just from the retro back. But you can say permits hold from this time to this time. It's going to take a little while to have that data to show it though. And that's why I asked if you were wanting to go a year and a half, cause it is going to take a little while to get data. To be able to really take a good look at it. Now, if you wanna do it in mid-year, you can. But if you go a little further out, it does give a little more stability to the home builders and those buyers and everybody. So it's predict, a little more predictable for.
A little more.
And like I said, if you give the assurances of if it's a house permitted during that timeframe, then they know, okay, if I got my permit in, that I got, then I'm okay.
The permit lasts for three months, six months, what is it? 180 days?
Higher than 80 days, yeah. Has to have activity with houses, 180 days. So most houses are done within that six month timeframe ballpark. So it just depends on material availability and everything. But I believe we're seeing a lot of them around six months.
That makes sense.
So.
And there have been some supply chain issues, so that makes more sense.
Like I said, you would, you have a lot of better data than I would assume.
Sarah, anything else?
Permit in 2023. It pushes you out to mid-June then, then to get there, you know?
Permitted in 2023. We just said it takes a year and a, a year, right? From today. So I'd say permitted through second quarter. 24, right? Is that what I heard? Is that correct?
Okay.
Did, is that what we heard or is that wrong?
That's what we heard.
Not okay?
I can do that. Then we reevaluate. And if I don't see that picture, I'm done.
Okay, so that would be till June.
2024.
Okay.
Through, it would be through June of 2024, through Q2.
Okay, somebody wanna make that motion then?
I'll make that motion. With the stipulations discussed.
Second.
Okay. Jeff does the second on that. Okay. Brett, let me know when you're ready. I wanna roll call this one.
I'm gonna make sure I have the, what you have here correct. So it'd be a reinstate tax abatement. And allow for any properties permitted through, through June of 2024, through the end of June 2024. And then you'd review it in 20, after that date or after that date?
Do you wanna do that the first week in July then? Should we just plan that, that that's when the review will take place? Or you wanna do it the last meeting of June? And you wanna kinda go through Q2?
I wanna get through Q2.
You wanna do the second meeting in July?
Sure.
That gives everybody a chance to quick.
So, um, just, I hate to my, uh, the second meeting around July next year. New council elections are done. If you're to do a review of it, the suggestion to you would be to consider reviewing it more like in August or September timeframe. That way you have a chance for that new council to settle in just a little bit. And it also gives you a chance for that data that those last, those ones that are trickling in, say June, the permits. You might see some of them done by that, you know, or from the beginning, first half of the year. If you got a permit in May, you might see a house done by that time. So I just wanna make sure you have your data, but you do either July or you could do it.
July. I'd like it to be this council.
Yeah.
We started it.
Yep. And is, uh, so that would be retroactive then back to the beginning of this year? Since we're reinstating?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. If, do I understand right? If there were a thousand homes to put, say, the conversation permitted between now and, and, and July of 2024, they would all be included in this?
Yes. Yes. Okay. All right. Jeff, you got, is there, where you, just go ahead and read it back.
So what I have then is reinstate the tax abatement. Eligible properties would be ones permitted through June of 2024. And then you'll review after the second quarter of 2024. So it'd be the date after that. So the first meeting in July would be the, at least when you'd review it.
Okay. So let's go vote. We'll do it, roll call. Sarah?
Hi.
Naomi?
I'm going to say no. And I just wanna say the reason is, is because, um, the residents that reached out to me all asked me to say no. I didn't have a single resident ask me to say yes. So I'm a no.
Okay. Stephanie?
No.
Okay. Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. And that's a tie, so I'll break the tie about eight hours. Okay. And we'll move on.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you, guys.
For coming.
Okay. We'll give it a couple minutes. Yep, we'll just pause a couple minutes and we'll get on with it.
I need a restroom break.
Just reminder.
You guys caved into a lit.
Yeah, I got on the other side of James Thomas. And also the other thing I picked up and I've had the mileage saved in the car. Went from 22.9 to 21.2 to 20.1. I didn't check changes cruise at all. Hell bent for election, we're gonna go. Things are getting served, we'll talk to you later.
I'll try to.
Okay. All right. Go on to number nine then. Jase, what do you got?
All right. Mayor members of the council, so what I have for you tonight is a street naming and addressing policy for the city. Um, a little bit kinda background behind this. So the city currently assigns addresses to all new developments and commercial property within the city. There has been no real kind of backbone structure to how we address these properties. And the goal behind this property is really give us kinda that, that backbone when we're addressing these properties. It also goes into street naming to provide guidance for how we're gonna do street naming. And gives us a policy to say that a street that starts in one direction has to continue through the next development. So we have consistency in these street names and we're not getting into like a memory lane and loss of a road situation where we have two different street names, which is more helpful for emergency services, USPS and just residents trying to navigate the city. Addressing will still be carried out by staff. We do work with Cass County when we're applying addressing, but really the main goal behind this is to kind of provide some policy which is gonna attribute to our consistency in how we're addressing. There's probably more in there about addressing than you care to know. But it is good for us to have something to put our foot down when we do have people approach us with concerns about their addresses or street names. That we have some sort of guiding policy document on how that works. So if you have any questions, we're happy to answer it, but, um, just looking to get something in place that we can point to when we get into some situations.
Yeah. Then we started, I think it was in 2017, sitting down with Cass County and kinda going over, you know, what their policy was and then how we'd be able to use that in the horse. Because we didn't have, we didn't have the manpower to do that kinda stuff. And now maybe it would be nice to kinda keep that, at least have some direction from here to there and not just lay it on them totally.
Found is kind of as people transition and things like that, without a standard addressing convention established, we're getting different types of addresses. So in some places we have, uh, odds and evens on opposite side of the road versus a different subdivision there on different sides of the road. So there's not a consistent pattern right now, um, with some of the older development or some of the newer development.
There's a newer person in Cass County doing it now, cause there was a gal that had been there for quite a while and had done it for years. I think she went to Morehead. And then there was a new person.
Yeah, they still have, I don't know how long Kay Anderson with, she's the 911 coordinator for the county as well as, well as their GIS manager. I don't know how long she's been it, ever since I've been with the city. Um, she's been the one that has been teaching me how to do addressing.
Might be a little further back than I think, but yeah, okay. Anyway, it'd be, I think it's good to keep it back or bring it back here now to be able to do that. So it's more being more, it's local.
Right.
So I'm fine with that.
And I guess I should note, this isn't affecting any existing addresses, so we're not gonna have a major overhaul of addresses. This is kind of a, a moving forward, this is how addressing will be done within the city.
No, I think it looks good. I, like I said, I think it's nice to have it back here now, now that we've got enough staff to be able to handle it. Cause it is, like you said, it's, it's, it's sometimes it gets me problematic. So it's nice to be able to keep it local. Do you guys have any questions on this? Jase?
No, that answered my question, cause I was gonna ask how you're gonna, like, if you were gonna go back and fix anything. Cause I know we have some developments that are butted up. And then you have like a granddaughter's name that goes through and that maybe another developer doesn't want their granddaughter's name.
So this, this obviously hopefully addresses a lot of that and gets us more into where we can have these street names continue through. Because nothing, I think, bothers emergency services or USPS or even, you know, coenforcement trying to get around the city. And, you know, I was on this road and I'm crossing the street and now I'm on a completely different road. And add the standard addressing convention would tell you that if those roads are in alignment, not even if they're connected, if they're in alignment, they should continue a, a street name through. So then the day that they are connected, you have a continuous identifier through that.
Yep.
Well, I looked at it, it looked good. Thank you.
Thank you, Jase.
Okay, I'm gonna look for somebody to make a motion to accept the street naming policy.
I will make a motion to accept the street naming policy.
Naomi makes a motion, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Stephanie does a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's everybody. All right. Gee, look, a street name changed on the next one, right, Don? Go figure, huh?
Imagine that.
All right.
So, Jase, go ahead. So little quick background, this is a, a prime example of one theory and technical application do not mix. So we looked at, whenever that second came through, we have completely understood with the curving of the road, trying to offset the memory lane was to create that, not as a thoroughfare. Now, when you go in and apply actual addressing or standard addressing convention, it doesn't work. So what you have in front of you tonight is an attempt to correct, uh, the theory, I guess, in this case. So that we can then apply a typical addressing convention, which would be in compliance with our, our new policy that was just adopted. Um, and then with this plat being recorded, we can then get addresses assigned to these lots. So this is really a, a correction to help with future addressing of this property. And hopefully would also help with emergency services response and things to find their way through a development. Cause currently, right now, memory lane did not connect from north to south. It went north and then you have to take another street over. This artificially creates a connection with memory lane in terms of street name. And then correct some other sign typology things as well, or street typology things as well. Uh, but the bulk of it was to create a fluid connection with memory lane. Just in terms of street name only, maybe alignment is a little off in this case, but that will help towards getting addresses assigned in this development.
Okay. Questions?
It's so curvy, Don.
Flying around the river.
All right. Anybody got any questions on this? Don, anything you wanted to add? I mean, it's pretty much just cut and dry, just asking.
I'm, I'm good.
All right, fair enough. Okay. Um, somebody wanna make a motion to accept the change?
Yes, it's fine. You can make that motion.
Jeff made, Jeff made it.
You gotta speak up, Jeff, I didn't hear ya.
So anybody wanna do a second?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's no problem.
Okay. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries. Jim?
All right, Mr. Mayor and Council, we have change order number two for the industrial addition paving. Um, as we may recall, we talked about this a lot last fall, number one, trying to get it done before the end of the year. Then we had some subgrade issues. The east half of that project was constructed privately, the west half is constructed as an improvement district. So we originally planned for the west, east half, west half to be, to be cement stabilized. And that worked out very well on that side. So during construction, we found over the west side, there were some subgrade issues that were compounded by multiple heavy trucks being, um, hauled into the private site developments to raise those pad lots up. So there was quite a bit of damage done to the main north or south 7th Avenue. And then there was some done on the first east-west. So yes, there was repeated trucking that pumped up moisture and destroyed those roads. So we worked with the contractor, all finished to prepare a change order for cement stabilizing the rest of that. Cause it is an industrial addition, just to kinda get the best product in the future. So we have quite a bit of items on this change order. We have item number one, which is cement stabilized subgrade. And like I said, during the construction of 2022, portions of the existing road on the east side of the project began to display subgrade distress. Um, industrial drive, industrial drive slash frontage road, 5th Street, east from Ino Drive to 7th. Um, industrial drive, industrial drive slash frontage road, Fifth Street, east from Ino Drive to Seventh Avenue, Seventh Street and Ino Drive. Seventh Street and Ino Drive. Uh, the distresses were caused by repeated heavy loads from adjacent private site, site developments in the area. Uh, to pave the road sections, addressing the subgrade is required due to structural benefits, economic advantages, and constructability. If we're left to perform a twelve inch cement stabilization on the remaining road sections, industrial additions to match that. So what was done on the, on the west side of it, um, pretty much the same thing going through all that. We have some aggregate shouldering on here to accommodate, uh, street shoulders on the project. Some quantity here, four to one slopes, transition to kind of fourteen back slopes, so.
Wait a minute, what slopes?
The back slopes of Conover fourteen.
No. Did you say four to one?
Yeah.
On which, on the roadway itself?
Let me get back to where I was here. Oh, I take that back. It's, uh, four to one or flatter, I believe. We're taking, taking out some of the three to ones, there's some three to ones by the landscaper. And they've indicated that they would prefer it to be a little bit flatter.
Yes.
Than what it is.
Okay.
There's material from sixty-six, excess material from Sixty-Sixth Street that's going to be brought in here. And used to flatten out those slopes. So.
Thank you.
Um, with that being said, it's a pretty significant change order, five hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, one hundred and sixty-nine, five hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty-nine cents. And a extension of the project, of the completion date to October fifteenth of twenty twenty-three with a substantial, or final completion of October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. So, um, this change order has been vetted through the, um, through the contractor. And you've got a copy of this in your packet, so you can see the areas where they did a very good job of breaking it down, breaking it down by each item. And then during, you can see the review that our staff had done as far as contractor markup and as to which spec sections are applicable to that. And then there was some negotiations as far as moving some mobilization, uh, from some subcontractors. So, um, we've been working on this one for, for quite a while. Availability of cement was one thing, we were sure that there's cement able to do this. Um, the other was just getting, getting the subcontractor, all mid-state's reclamation in to do it, to do the work. And we have that now and, um.
And they've indicated the cement stabilization, the product is readily available?
Yes. Yep. For this project, they said it is.
Say again?
For this project, they said it is.
Okay.
So a pretty involved change order. Like I said, you've got all the sheets in here if you want to ask questions on that. But, um, in order to move forward, we're recommending approval of this change order.
Okay. Any questions?
No, we must do this one with a fine tooth comb. We adjusted markups and whatnot. Did you have a question, sir?
Can I, can I ask a question? As far as paying for this, is it going to be allowed, you need special assessments with risk?
Special assessments on the adjacent properties, yep.
Okay, regardless of fault of reconstruction. It's not my fault, it's somebody else went back and forth with their own issue.
Right. And that was a question that we had had during, when it was happening. Was, was there any recourse to those four traveling on the road? And the attorney told us that there really wasn't anything for, for that.
Thank you for looking at it.
Yeah, we did. We wanted to, believe me.
Yeah, I know, I know.
All right. Any other questions? Louisiana, look for a motion to accept the change order.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Sarah makes a motion, can I get a second?
We don't have much choice, we're not going to get it done if we don't.
I'll second.
Naomi does a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion carries. Big Erbs event permits, Brett?
This one, we've had a request from Big Erbs. Uh, apologize, we're going to be working through cleaning, cleaning up how we do requests like these in the future. Uh, in the past, we've had folks just pass through via a letter or we'll try to do a form. I think we'll be creating a different form in the future. Uh, as for part of this request, is in regards to fireworks. And fire is starting to create some of their own forms, so we're going to find a way to integrate these in the future. So, and I just found out about these forms here today. In regards to the street closure request, what Big Erbs is doing is, uh, or what they plan on doing is on the twenty-eighth of July or, I apologize, I have to double check it here, July twenty-eighth, they would like to be doing the street dance on County Road seventeen. Now, County Road seventeen is not controlled by the city per se. But I want to make sure to bring this to council of, would you be, would the council be supportive of County Road seventeen being closed for a street dance? Now, requests would have to go to the county and the county would still have to approve it or not since this county road. So that's the first part there. They have identified and touching base with them earlier today. They indicated that if they can't have it on County Road seventeen, their backup plan would be to do on their property in the parking lot area or their, on their property there. And they would just have a condensed street dance there. In the past, the city has worked with them, but it typically has synced up with Bean Days in the past. This one isn't, this one will be July twenty-eighth, like I mentioned.
Didn't they do the same thing last year?
Mm-hmm.
I believe it was last year or the year before.
Yeah, we had a previous agreement, however, that there was a lane held open for the fire department for emergency.
It was trickier, we did, it, it was last year or the year before, I can't recall what one it was. But it was, uh, the city put that request in overall to the county along with our Bean Days request. And the county approved it that way. Now, we have not put our request in yet for real closure, for Bean Days, yeah. That will probably be in, within the next month, we'll be putting that request in. We've never had issue for real closures associated with Bean Days because of this community festival and all that. So that's just one component of this. They also, they submitted for a, they requested a special events permit basically in regards to the noise. And if they were to be on County Road seventeen, then liquor, so they could serve liquor over into the County Road seventeen area. But noise, uh, the concert starts at six P M, goes up to two A M. That's what they've indicated, but they would like to shut down seventeen from noon to, noon to, noon to two A M.
Can you clarify what you just said?
So.
You said serve liquor.
They want to shut down the road from noon to two A M.
Okay.
From their advertisements, they're advertising the concert starting at six. So the noise can go up until about six, or two A M is what their request is.
Six to two?
That is what they have requested. Now, the council can control that, you can say no. You go at one A M or you go until midnight or you could control that.
I think we did midnight a long time.
I believe in the past, they've done their own midnight. So it's a second problem of this.
I mean, that's that whole thing, if we're going to start at six, I'd say midnight's max. Because that's, we're going to shut, if they're requesting a road shutdown from noon, that's a twelve hour shutdown.
Yeah.
For a dance event.
Yeah.
Not that I don't mind them doing it, but that's a long time for that road, because it's a very busy road.
I was gonna say.
Other construction going on around town, so.
I thought we shut down at three o'clock last, last time.
I believe it was a little later, it wasn't answered.
Three or four, wasn't it?
I believe that.
They anticipate six hours of roadie time to get set up for this thing, huh?
That's what they've indicated.
And July twenty-eighth is a Friday, so it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
Mm-hmm.
You got people getting out of town too.
So there is a third problem, so I want to make sure I address it to help with your conversation. Cause they've asked for fireworks permit also. That is something we're working with fire, discussed it with fire. Uh, fire has requested that they, there are some conditions though. Uh, those conditions would be a pyrotechnic operator is licensed and insured. Uh, the applicant would provide a site plan showing that where they're going to light fireworks, where the audiences tend, tend to be. And basically making sure that if there was a bad firework that didn't launch up.
That nobody's gonna get injured.
The spectators are not impacted by that.
Within reason, yeah.
Uh, Big Erbs would have to provide security, basically some folks to make sure that folks don't wander off in the lighting area for these fireworks.
Okay, so where are they planning to do the lighting of that?
They indicated right over where they have in the past here, basically the water tower, the railroad right away.
Okay.
And then that's another element is, uh, they would need to, they would want to see a signed agreement from the property owner saying that yes, they can light off those fireworks. In the past, fireworks, Big Erbs has just done it and they let them off. Kind of gray area right by the tracks slash the parking lot here. The fire would like to see an agreement or some, even a lawyer would just say, yep, you could do this. And then last one is just something in writing from, saying the times, which I believe is at ten P M.
Think, Aaron, on that, would it be a good idea maybe to rope off an area that they can actually launch the fireworks within? So it doesn't, we stay in, like, they stay within an area, so other people know to stay out of it and not park or. Just some way to keep people away from it a little better? I, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there.
So that's the issue, I don't know, like, so we have to provide mortar size of the actual firework. I have no idea, the smallest one, um, that I have, that I, is for, it has to be a hundred and fifty, um, radius.